Okay, looks like everybody is here. I'm gonna check with IT to make sure we're ready to go. Got the thumbs up there. Madam Clerk, are you good?
Good evening. I'll take role. Councilman Jindal, Councilman Lenart, Councilman Rigsby,
Here.
Mayor Potem Daily,
Here.
Mayor Duper,
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Do we want to report out on the workshop first or do the invocation and pledge allegiance? Doesn't matter? So, the Finance and Audit Committee met before this meeting to go over our audit report, and that will be presented to the council in kind of a shorter form here. And, nothing else to report on, because you will get the report from them, so, and I don't want to duplicate. If you all would join me in a word of prayer and pledge to our flag.
Father in heaven, thank you for bringing us all together again tonight into a new year. Please guide and direct us as we ponder and decide things that matter to all of our friends and neighbors in this community. Thank you for all the blessings and the blessing to live here. Again, we ask you guide and direct us this evening. Thank you again, in your name. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, do any of the items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, at this part of our meeting, we have open public comment. This is comments on things that are not agendized. Looking so far, we have three speakers. Was that it? Just three? Okay. I got a lot of papers here on the desk, so if I miss you, run up. Mr. Dangerman, I think you were first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Appreciate being able to come. And, what we wanted to do is, myself and Joe Frink will give you an update on what's happening at the Adobe and some of the projects that we're involved in, all of which is a good report, which is something to cherish rather than negative stuff. At any rate, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to do this. And, the first, there's three, hopefully, three short items that I wanted to cover. First of all is that, the, we've been updating our plan of the Adobe grounds and working with staff. It's modified somewhat from what we had originally proposed. Much of it is the same of citrus area along the street and parking and a bus parking, a picnic area for kids and vegetable garden. But, we are also, the main thing, of course, to the plan is to have as many opportunities to interpret various historic stories that could be done there. Because, there's over, you know, over 200 years of history, and of course, a lot of prehistory that is in that immediate area. And then, the Adobe itself has been there for now 160 years, so there's a lot of time that it covers. One of the interesting things, we'll be having a gathering area now that when kids get off, they could be oriented as to what they're going to be seeing and then the various items. And, in the past, we'd also been thinking about a old wagon that the Frink family had a wagon run from San Pedro Harbor all the way to the Arizona minefields. But it also had a double bottom, some of them did, or one of them did, that they could hide the gold and silver in case bandits raided on them. And so, we want to do a duplicate of that and be able to tell that story and the fact that they would have been going up and down this as a dirt road way back in the past. But, we're also looking for new things, and Joe came up with a couple of pictures of his great aunt who had reported a wonderful flower garden right in the front. So, we'd like to then deal with this area from that standpoint and then have pictures that show what that was. And then, also a little fish pond that Joe used to fish in when he was, yeah, yeah, I guess. So, this, the area that was of a great deal of, required a great deal of work was the area behind the Adobe because of the need to, first of all, have a pathway that would be right on where the Sankey or Zanha flowed in the past. But also, to have security for this area. And so, thanks to cooperation and working relationships with Lorena and Jarb and also with Matthew, with Lenar, we were able to work out something that will provide security and keep it secure so that we don't end up with another homeless area in the Grove. But also, will allow free flow when there's people there. And, another thing that we're working on is a kind of an area that could be a place for events, for a small wedding or just a meetings and/or a garden club to meet, that type of thing. And, we're looking at utilizing the edge of this barn area and restroom area that, to do a mural on that wall of showing the entire distance of the Zanha from the mountains all the way to the Guachama Village at the far end. So that, it'll be an area where we can do an orientation of that. And, Joe has a picture of what the Zanha looked like in this area. And, it had some rocks around it and also some sycamore trees and native sycamore trees. And what we want to do is to have a little area that will have water and sort of a flowing, rotating water area so it can help to better show what it was like. One of the neat things that, almost all of the trees were, ended up being torn out. There's a few of the very oldest ones that we're able to preserve. And, but Lenar is now looking as part of their landscape to then be replacing those trees with young citrus. But, we're working with the university at Riverside whereby they can be pruned back. There'd be like a navel orange or a Valencia orange, it really wouldn't matter. Prune back and then do grafting from the trees that still remain. There's two that are the original Frink orange. And, so we can graft those onto those and then get new trees that will have a replicate and will get them faster than their seedlings that they're working on. So, at any rate, one other thing that we're looking at is, is the shed here. We're now measuring it in accordance with what existed and the parts that were moved over and preserved. And then, the restrooms would be ADA size and shape and everything else. So, at any rate, our plan is modified somewhat and moving forward, and we're very happy about that. The second thing I wanted to cover was that, we've had really good cooperation with various people in trying to raise funds and also volunteer efforts to do some of the work. And, the best example is, the Jacinto is doing all the grading and construction work there for Lenar. And they came in and volunteered all their labor for tearing out some of the trees that needed to come out and doing various shaping of it. And, which was just a very wonderful gift. We asked at the end, how much is all this going to cost? And they said, no problem. It's our donation. And, the second thing is, I approached my brother, Jack, and the Dangerman families had a tradition of donating trees and plant material to all the parks and redlands. And, I said, well, you know, Loma Linda used to have, I mean, the Frink Adobe area used to have a redlands address. Would that be, so, he has agreed to provide all the plant material. It leaves in question, water irrigation system that we'll need to accomplish with some other volunteer help or whatever. And Joe's got a couple more other items with people that he's been working with. And so, I'll turn it over to Joe to then, and he's way in the back, of course. Come on, Joe. He's been busy with some friends as well. They, there's another, you remember when we, when you took the original action in order to set this aside? The, what do I want to say? Board of Supervisor, Mrs. Rowe, came and she donated funds and those are, we still have that we can use wherever we might wish as needs arise. But, the other thing I wanted to mention was that we had promised to then have some sort of a community event out there or information for all the neighbors that live in that historic district to involve them and let them know what we're doing. And, we started to try to do that and then it didn't, didn't work out. But I'd like to resurrect that again. It seems to me that it would be good to get them involved and help us do some of the plant selections and things like that. So, Joe?
Thank you. Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. Pete pretty much covered everything I wanted to. You get him, get him on a roll and he keeps going. And, I'm kind of glad for that because I'm not, I hate to speak. But I just want to say thank you to Lorena Jarb and Matthew. They have been great to work with here recently. I have to qualify that a little bit, Jarb. They have, they have kept me notified and told me what I can and can't do. I've been invited to the scoping of the restoration of the Adobe about two weeks ago when they had Spectra down in their structural architect and historic architect. And, I'll tell you what, I learned a lot because I didn't know so much was involved. They, one of the things that, they said they have to get exact measurements of the Adobe. And I says, oh, I have those. I did those with a tape. He says, oh, no, we got to do with a laser. And I said, it's just a square box, you know. It's not hard to do. But anyway, I want to thank you guys for your help. And like Pete said, we've got big plans for it. The landscaping, I believe, is going to be beautiful. We'll probably have over 100 different plantings in there. I mean, that's going to include the trees, the orange trees, the grapefruit trees, the decorative trees and the gardens. So, we think we probably need to approach the city on non-potable water hookup eventually when that may become available down the street. I think they're putting it in now, aren't they, Jarb?
Putting the pipe.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Thank you. The community, Pete and I, we've talked about this a lot. And, when the weather gets a little nicer, gets a little warmer, we would like the city to help us put some kind of community event on where we can tell the community about the Adobe and get their thoughts and ideas on it too. They, when you drive by it, like I've said before, when you drive by it, it looks like an old plastered house. It needs to be knocked down. And, much to my chagrin, of course. But, it, the structural engineer had some ideas about the plaster on there, which he said is not, it's old, but it's not of that period. So, which I think my uncle probably replastered that, just updated when they lived there. But, some ideas on how to bring that Adobe back, which was really good. Oh, oh, the tree care. Lenar has been watering the trees significantly. They didn't realize how much an orange tree or a fruit-bearing tree takes. In the dry weather, the arid part that we live in the state, you have to run those sprinklers and they don't put out a whole lot. You have to run those about 24 hours, twice a month, to get it down to root depth. But, and that's a significant part of it, of course. The water, very important. But along with that, there's also a lot of nutrients that trees need to flourish. If I can get some help, I know they don't want me down there working. But I would like to go down there and paint the bark so it doesn't get bark burn. And also, fertilize the trees. I swear I won't pull any weeds or anything. Maybe pick a few fruit. I picked a bunch and made it for Christmas morning, orange juice from the Frink Valencia. It was wonderful. We've got a good crop down there this year. Unfortunately, we have a fruit slice too, but they came to my house up on Wabash and they sprayed the few trees that I have. And, I don't know if they've been down around there or not. I don't think so because they usually tag it if they do. The last thing is, I'd like to ask Lorena if maybe we could call for a historic meeting in February? Is that possible?
Yeah, let me find out and then I'll get back to you.
I'd have a lot, I have a lot of things I'd like to go over with the committee, if that's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can tell you our regular scheduled meeting is for March, first Monday in March.
Okay. Thank you. Anyway, thank you for your time and thank you for your effort. And, I think we're slowly getting everybody on board with Adobe. And I think it's going to be pretty exciting once we get it done. It's going to take a lot of work and several, several hundred thousands dollars in repair.
How's the roof? How's the roof? It got covered, right?
You know, the roof, I think, actually is a whole lot better than everybody thinks. Because when the city was up there and they repaired it, they put new, it was particle board, sheeting down. Now, whether they did any joices or roof rafters or anything like that, I don't know. But, that, I think that the roof is holding up. There's no leaks. It's, they did a nice job putting it on this time really too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any question?
Bring us back to who it belongs to. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Osa.
Thank you, City Council. Our city staff appreciate all your service. I found out that now we're serving hot lunches at the senior center, which is wonderful. That at least something added this year in the new year. So I wish everyone a vibrant and a blissful 2024. One of the things that concerns me is how hard it is to get a hold of my elected officials. Before, when I tried, it took me about three months to get responses. Before, when I tried, it took me about three months to get responses. And even after that, I'm not always being able to get in touch with my elected officials. I looked at some neighboring cities. They regularly hold coffee hour with at least one city official, elected or appointed, every month, and often more than one breakfast or coffee hour. And I strongly urge that people that are elected by us, that we get access to them. I don't think that's too much to ask. Is it? I wonder. Also, I look at the community senior centers and the amount of activities they have. We have basically four activities plus lunches. We're spending close to, what, $85,000, $90,000 a year on building maintenance? And we're holding four activities. That, to me, seems very meager. I wonder, again, that more activities could be done. Each time we're told that there are no volunteers, therefore we can't have more activities. I know of at least three people, plus a teacher in Redlands, who is teaching at the senior center of French class. She's willing to hold a class here. Other volunteers have been told we don't need volunteers. So whether we need volunteers or don't we, let's make our mind up. Again, at Redlands, the coordinator there has signup sheets. They have an application form. Somebody came here not too long ago, a retired doctor, and was willing to volunteer. Basically, the gentleman was told we don't need any. So I'm confused whether we need them, we don't. Before, when I spoke at the meeting, one of the council members asked, you know, am I just talk or am I willing to put in the time? And I offered. Additionally, we don't have internet access, which other community centers, St. Bernardino, Colton, Redlands, all of them offer that, Ucaipa, to instructors that are teaching. I don't think that if the city hall has internet access, why can't the senior center use the same internet? Of course, create a separate account or to track it as to what it's being used for. I understand security and there are many ramifications. Again, not giving access to the internet, I think it's not right. Again, I looked at Redlands. Once a month, they have somebody helping seniors with computers. Right now, till April 15th, they have one day a week, somebody helping with income tax forms. They also have somebody coming in and volunteering to help seniors with cell phones. So multiple activities are occurring. They have blood pressure screenings once a month. I mean, these things don't really cost that much. Because from LLUH, I'm sure nurses or they would come and volunteer and do that, or medical students. But again, we're not seeing any of that. Before, I've turned in some signed requests. I think I turned in about 65 or so. I've gotten other 70 or so requests and there's a form sitting in senior center with signatures, but the volunteers can't find it, so it's missing in action. I'll submit the additional signatures. And I request that communication and these signatures and my emails to the mayor be made part of the minutes. That would be most appreciated, so it becomes official. Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak.
Of course. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll deal with any conflicts of interest as they arise. And from there, we'll move on to our scheduled items, 2A, which is a joint meeting with the city council and the housing authority regarding our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2223. And I'll open the housing authority also. So Sonia, I don't know if you want to do introductions or Jarb?
Let Sonia start.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and members of the audience. We are presenting to you today the annual financial statements for the city. And first presenting will be Brad Willibor. He's the CP, the partner in charge of the audit. Veronica, are you doing? And Veronica will be presenting the presentation today. And then following that, Anna Browns, our senior accountant, financial analyst for the city, will be presenting the financial data.
No, I'm okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city councils. Nice to be with you tonight. We're here to present the results of the annual audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. As Mayor presented earlier, we did, prior to this meeting, at 6 o'clock, meet with the Finance and Budget Committee and gave a presentation to them. And we're going to summarize that presentation for you today here. And I'm going to hand this over now to Veronica Hernandez, which is the engagement manager on this job. And she's going to go through our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So today I have a short presentation. If we can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so we'll start with the city's responsibilities. And that is to present the city's financial position and results of its operations fairly in a conformance with generally accepted accounting principles. It is to adopt sound accounting policies, provide reasonable accounting estimates, establish and maintain internal controls, and to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibilities are to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material statement. We examine on a test basis evidence supporting those amounts and disclosures, assess accounting principles used, estimates made, and evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. We also review the city's internal control policies and procedures and express an opinion over the city's financial statements. Our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates appear reasonable and disclosures have been properly reflected. Other key points to note is we had no disagreements with management, no material errors or irregularities were discovered, no significant accounting issues discovered, and no internal control findings. This concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
And we also wanted to thank Sonia and her team. This process takes hundreds of hours on our team's part, but literally thousands of hours on their part because all year long, they're the ones implementing your directive and following these policies. So you are getting the unmodified opinion on these financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that we can offer on financial statements, which is excellent, and no findings to report to you. So congratulations, Sonia and Anna, and your team.
I don't want to jump the gun, so I'm not sure if there's more of the presentation where we talk about the process? Or are we talking about, or about the? Okay, I'll wait then. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, city staff, and members of the public. Tonight, I'm presenting the financial statements for fiscal year 2023. You have before you copies of the annual comprehensive financial report. This report is also referred to as ACFR or ACFR. I will be giving an overview of the financial statements. There are three main sections of the report, the introductory, financial, and statistical. The introductory section includes a transmitter letter that highlights the city's profile, significant events, and accomplishments. It also includes the Government Finance Officers Association Award for 2022 for excellence in financial reporting, a list of principal officers in place during the fiscal year, and an organization chart. The financial section includes the auditor's report from Rams, management's discussion and analysis, the financial statements, notes, and required supplementary information, and supplementary information that compares budget to actual for each governmental fund. The management's discussion and analysis found on pages 5 to 17 of the ACFR provides a narrative explanation of the financial statements. And the statistical section that includes financial trends, revenue and debt capacity, demographic, economic information, and operating information. The financial statements include the city, the Loma Linda Housing Authority, and the Successor Agency, which is a private purpose trust fund. There are two presentations. The government-wide statements are presented using the full accrual basis of accounting and include non-current items such as long-term debt and also includes non-cash items such as depreciation expense, while these items are not reported on the fund financials. The financial presentation of the governmental funds is based on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is closest to cash. On a day-to-day basis, the city uses the modified accrual basis to record financial transactions. And then at the end of the year, the fund financials are converted into the full accrual basis of accounting as presented on the government-wide statements to report the city as a whole and also to give a comparable view to a business-type entity that are also run at full accrual. The financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. The upcoming slides will highlight certain sections of the financial statements. This slide shows the summary of statement activities in the government-wide full accrual section. For fiscal year ended June 30, 2023, the citywide net position increased by 6.4 million from 156.7 million to 163.1 million. Of this change, 6.5 million is coming from governmental activities and a decrease of 85,000 coming from business-type activities. This slide is showing the statement of net position. The net position for governmental activities totaled 131.4 million and 31.7 million for business-type activities. Business-type activities includes water, sewer, and Loma Linda-connected communities. The net investment in capital assets line here is made up of capital assets less accumulated depreciation and outstanding balances of debt associated with those assets. Restricted net position is for the purposes of public works, public safety, community development, general government, and debt service. Continuing on to the statement of activities found on pages 19 to 20 of the ACFR, this statement provides an overall picture of the resources needed to run the city by the type of activities involved to run a city. So governmental activities, it includes general government, public safety, community development, public works, and debt service. For fiscal year 2023, this is explaining this line here. Total cost for these activities was 36 million. And after applying program revenues such as charges for services, operating and capital contributions of 25.9 million, the remaining 10.1 million was subsidized by general revenues such as property, sales, transient occupancy, business license, motor vehicle in due and other taxes, as well as investment and miscellaneous revenue. I'd like to note that included in the net cost of 10.1 million is the recognition of pension-related adjustment, which increased expenses in the amount of 6.2 million. You may recall from last fiscal year, the city was in an overfunded position with its pension. This year, that's not the case. The net pension liability was 8.5 million as of the end of fiscal year. So the shift from having a net pension asset last year to having a net pension liability, along with amortization of deferred outflows and inflows, resulted in the increase in expenses of 6.2 million. Well, the prior year, this amount had an adjustment that decreased expenses by 8.5 million due to the favorable results of investments from purse. It's important to note that the required adjustment does not change pension contribution rates or cash flow, but it required that expenses are reflected by a reporting measure. In 2023, the city also recognized capital contribution revenue from developer-donated infrastructure in the amount of 10.8 million for governmental activities and 2.8 million for business-type activities. Moving on to business-type activities, again, it includes water, sewer, and LLC. The cost to run business-type activities was 16.9 million and are offset by the charges for services being collected for these activities, leaving a deficit of 913,000. And then it's also offset by a portion of general revenues such as investment income. Similar to the governmental activities, there was also a pension adjustment that increased total business-type expenses by 2.7 million, while in the prior year, that same adjustment decreased expenses by 3.2 million. Moving along to general revenues, the amount increased by 340,000 from 2022. And that is a combination of increase in investment income of 1.6 million, property tax increased 200,000, franchise tax increased by 200,000, motor vehicle in due 200,000 increase, other taxes and miscellaneous revenue increased by 180,000. And then these were offset by decrease in sales tax in the amount of $2 million, leaving the change of 340,000. The decrease in sales tax is due to higher collection in prior year, including a misallocation to the city that was reduced from this year's collection, as well as one of the top sales tax producer closing their operations in the city as of December 2022. In total, there is a net change of 6.4 million to the net position citywide. So we've gone through the government-wide financials. Now we're moving on to the fund financials. This slide shows the general fund fund balance classifications. $2 million is for emergency contingency. Assigned fund balance includes 1.2 million for capital equipment replacement, 470,000 for fire equipment replacement, 210,000 for refuse services, and 34,000 for fire training. The fund balance from last year of 17 million increased by $2,317,341 to 19.3 million. This slide is showing the statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund. The general fund had revenues of 23.5 million, offset by expenditures of 24.9 million, plus other financing sources of 3.7 million, resulting to an increase in fund balance of 2.3 million. resulting to a increase in fund balance of two point three million. As compared to the prior year, revenues line item here decreased by eight hundred six thousand. The decrease is due to, it's a combination again of increase in use of money and property, mainly investment earnings. And then in intergovernmental revenues increased by two hundred forty-two thousand, charges for services, a hundred five thousand and then offset by decrease in taxes as explained previously and licenses and permits. General fund expenditures here increased by one million from twenty-three point nine to twenty-four point nine. And this is also coming from a combination of increase in current expenditures of five hundred thousand and increase in capital expenditures of five hundred thousand. The current year expenditures include an increase in public safety contracts and general services contracts, salaries and benefits for cost of living adjustment, increase in repairs and maintenance. And then it's offset by a million dollar, there was in twenty twenty-two, there was a million dollar additional contribution to the pension liability. Other financing sources, it's comparative year to year and that includes two point nine million of the receipt of the A R P A or the American Rescue Plan Act funding distribution. The city has used these funds to offset expenditures related to public safety. And this is the twenty twenty-three is the final year of that funding.
Let me interrupt right quick.
Yeah, let's clarify that. So we would have been in a deficit had it been for that A R P A money that we got. And that was the last time we got that set of A R P A funds was this last year, correct?
Correct.
So we're not going to have that bailout this next year.
Correct.
That was what I want to point out. If you look at the revenue and expenditures, the expenditure is more than the the revenue. So we are deficit about one point seven million, but I wish we received some one one time of two years grant from the federal fund.
So which was COVID money for a better way to say it, which is now gone. So next year, we're going to have to tighten the belt extremely.
So follow up on that. It looks like we got around one point four million. Sound about right?
From A R P A?
From A R P A.
No, it was two point.
Two point nine.
For twenty twenty-three?
Yes, both twenty-two and twenty-three on this line, two point nine million.
Okay, let's say it was two point nine million. So our ending fund balance would have been around sixteen point four without without it? Okay. So we would have had around a six hundred K deficit.
Yeah. Thanks. Sorry, we just had to make make that clear. Go ahead.
This is the summary of the general fund's budgetary comparison. As seen on this slide, revenues were lower than budgeted by one point two million. The primary reason for this is coming from miscellaneous revenue from capital project-related overhead credits coming in less than budgeted. This is due to the delay in the start of certain water fund capital projects. When there's a a capital project, the general fund receives overhead credits based on the cost of that project and that did not materialize this year. For the expenditures, the original budgeted expenditures were increased throughout the year, either at mid-year or throughout the year by two point eight million from twenty-four point two to twenty-six point nine million. However, there was a savings in overall expenditures of two million. And this is coming from seven hundred fifteen thousand was due to capital expenditures coming in under budget due to timing of receipt of certain equipments. And the remaining variance is due to conservative spending citywide. Moving along to the proprietary funds or business type activities. As seen here, the change in net position, which is the end result of operations for business type funds was negative eighty-five thousand. And these are from changes from water enterprise and sewer capital, positive changes for water enterprise and sewer capital and negative changes for the water acquisition and the Loma Linda connected communities. For water acquisition, the decrease was mainly due to capital outlay expenses related to water distribution and construction of new reservoir. For L L L C P, the decrease is due to the continued lack of revenues to offset accruing interest on the loans owed to the successor agency. The water enterprise ended with a positive change in net position of three hundred eighty-three thousand. And that's mainly due to capital contributions and transfers in, offset by the pension adjustment. The sewer capital had nine hundred twenty-two thousand more revenues than expenditures, causing a positive change in net position. Majority of the change is also due to capital contributions from developers.
Yes.
On Loma Linda connected communities, we lost five hundred and ten thousand last fiscal year, seven hundred and seventy thousand. And as I understand it, most of that is debt management. And we're going in the wrong direction. So I'm assuming that if we sustain Loma Linda connected communities, we're going to see that annual deficit increase.
Yes, sir. So that's what I'm doing right now is I've been working with finance, our city attorney office and see, try to looking for the way out because we can't sustain this this debt. Because we have too much debt. So so now that's why Mark keeps involved with this this looking for a solution because Mark has been involved with with this. I already have from where the beginning. So he's been very helpful. So we're we're working on it.
But we've run a deficit ever since we started.
Yes, yes, because at first we had to borrow money to be able to install the infrastructures. And and it turned out that we have a hard time recovering from the the services that that internet we provide.
You had talked a little bit this last year about potentially trying to market it and turn it around or we no?
We we try and and it's that what happened is just to be honest, you saw Frontier came out, installed a lot of fiber optic conduit and facility and hook it up to the resident. And and they have newer equipment, newer hardware. And so therefore, the speed of the internet for Frontier is faster than ours. And and if we want to be that category or that speed, you have to spend couple more million dollar in our hardware and software. It's hardware alone, really. So so it's difficult.
How many subscribers do we have?
I don't have the number in front of me.
We have some, we have some commercial subscribers.
Yes.
Pretty consistent.
Yes, we we make more money in a commercial than residential. So.
Sorry.
This is the statement for the successor agency. The fiduciary net position of the successor agency improved by almost four point five million from five point eight million to one point three million. Although liabilities decreased by four mil by four million due to the debt service payments, there are still one point three million more than assets, therefore causing a negative net position. The successor agency received four point nine million in property taxes for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year through the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule or R O Ps process. The deductions incurred are for general and administrative charges and interest charges on long-term debt and bonds. And that concludes my presentation. I would like to thank also everyone for their assistance in the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you go to slide four, I believe, where we're talking about the expenditures?
Four?
Okay, that was wrong slide. Go three down. Right there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so from what I understood is we had around six million that wasn't covered by fees, but four million of that was because of pension retirement. The increase from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three in governmental activities. The rest of the two million, why did we not collect enough fee for the activities we were doing? Why was there a deficit?
For this, this line? Historically, at this, at this level, at the program revenues level, we don't fully collect our cost. And that's why it's subsidized by general revenues, which are coming from taxes.
Yep. So I get that part. What I'm trying to get to is like, what are we having to cover from the general revenue?
Good one is the L M Ds, which are the landscape maintenance districts, which we're grossly underfunded. The problem is, is that those people have to vote the tax increase in, which they will never do and we can't impose it. So then we end up paying, that's one example. I know there's others.
Does any of the new construction fall under that category where we had to pay more than the fees we were getting?
No.
Go ahead.
Can you rephrase your question?
So what I'm trying to figure out is we we have one example of why we had to pull out of the general fund to pay for some of those activities. What I'm trying to figure out or what are the big buckets that we're having to do that for?
What are other examples?
So if you look at page nineteen and twenty, it, the slide right here is covered, is explaining or summarizing what is shown in detail in page nineteen and twenty. And this is how the program revenues that we receive offset expenses. So historically, the the revenue that's received, the program revenues that are received will hardly ever cover all of the expenses that are combined for the city in total. And this is.
Public safety.
So public safety, just the costs increase, but we don't, we don't have enough revenue in those streams to cover it. So we cover it with general fund.
Right.
Right. So for example.
Revenues, combined general revenues.
Yes.
So if you look at the last column on page twenty, the public safety is a negative thirteen point five, I mean thirteen point six million. So. Correct.
That's why a lot of cities are now implementing or going to the voters and asking for public safety utility taxes. What do we, what do we pay to keep the senior center open again every year?
I mean.
What is it? Eighty-five thousand a year to keep the senior center open? Wonder if we could use that money somewhere else.
I had one more question. So on page sixty-three, where we're talking about the employee retirement plan, that change from January first, twenty thirteen, was that something we did at the city or was that something statewide?
Statewide.
Yes, statewide. It's the state purse changed the rule so that anything, any people to hire after January first of twenty twenty-three, I mean twenty thirteen, the retirement will be two percent at sixty-two.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I I've gone through a number of these now. Dusty and I used to do them a couple of years ago. And so I've had the opportunity to sit through these audits. And I learned something new today. It was the first time I had heard it and it was really fascinating to me. I had to clarify with the with the company on how they do it. But they actually go through our meeting minutes for every meeting that we hold and check that the city is accountable to the direction that we give in the meet in the minutes and follow through. And I thought that was really fascinating and you probably knew that. I I didn't. And I then I asked, do they have to watch the videos of the meetings? They said they don't have to do that. But they do go through the written minutes to confirm the city follows through on every direction that's given. And I thought that was very fascinating and I want to say comforting maybe isn't the word, but it's 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 interesting to see how government works, the checks and balances and assuring. And then the other piece was that we try to always every year pressure them to say, hey, so come on, like, give it to us straight. Are we, are we good? Are we? And and they can't officially say that, but we we do very well comparatively to other cities that are maybe in deeper holes than we are. But that doesn't mean we're not in a hole ourselves. So we have to figure that out. And and we obviously are going to come up short on revenues unless we do figure that out. So that was my comment. But thank you for teaching me something tonight. That was pretty cool.
Again, I want to thank you staff, Sonia, Anna and finance department and all the department head that that has been working with us and and get the the budget done and work with me throughout the year and try to stay within the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is just a receive and file. So we will move on to our our items for movement. We have the consent calendar. And unless anything needs to be pulled, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar. I have a motion by Dr. Lenard, a motion or second by Mr. Gindal.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. I'll take the vote. Take your vote on the screen. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have nothing under old business. Under new business, five A, we approve an agreement with C G I Digital on the street banner program, community development.
This is another exciting marketing tools that we have been working on.
Exactly. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. You might recall last year, we brought the representative from C G I Digital to do a quick presentation about a video program series. And we showed those videos, five videos, a few months ago, highlighting all the great things about Loma Linda. So they have since returned to us with a new and exciting program, a new decorative street banner program. It is also at no cost to the city. Basically, what they're going to end up doing is seeking out sponsors from local businesses. So it's almost like a public-private collaboration between the city, them and the local businesses. So what I'm going to show you on the screen today are actually just screenshots from their presentation to us. It's going to be informal. Feel free to chime in at any time with any questions. Okay, so what we're, what we're asking you today is just to approve this agreement with them. It will be a three-year agreement. They will be providing installation, maintenance, repairs. The hardware will work with them in terms of choosing the themes and the designs, the size of the banners and the location. Basically, the city has full control of these banners. So at bare minimum, we're going to get twenty-five free banners. Even if they can't find a sponsor or a local business that wants to put State of Brothers on their banners along with our, for example, if we choose the theme Christmas banners, we would have like a third. for example, if we choose the theme Christmas banners, we would have like a third or a fourth of the banner be a small space to write the name of a business. And if they can't get sponsors, no matter what, we get a minimum twenty-five free banners to put throughout the community. If they get a hundred sponsors, then that means that's a hundred free banners of us. Again, any size, any location, we choose the content, we choose the theme, such as we did with the videos.
Can I?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. You said to interrupt, right?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, you said to ask questions, right?
Yes, yes.
When, when you say... Oh, well, you got a picture of it there, so you answered.
I'm gonna go, yes.
I, I was just curious what a banner is by definition.
And, and we can go there. This scene, this slide right here is just showing that they're going to, again, provide installation, maintenance, brackets. They cover the insurance. We pick the location, the theme, and the content. So real quick, this is, give you an idea of what the banners could look like. We're going to work with our staff. If we wanted to be a Christmas theme, then we'll go Christmas. If we want to honor any of the local vets, we can do that, too. This is just to give you some idea of what other cities have done. And again, we get to pick the size of how big the sponsor area is going to be. So if you see on the screen on the bottom right, we could local, we could highlight the local organizations, such as the Chamber. ACE could pay, or if we had an ACE, they can pay for their own square. Here's some other ideas. And that's it. Like I said, it's very informal. With your permission, we want to enter into this green agreement. That way, they can start seeking sponsors, and we can start figuring out what themes that we want to present on these new banners that they're going to provide. Again, this is a three-year agreement. They pay and they cover the banners. They will install them. Any issues throughout the year, they, they will fix it. So I'm asking you today if it's okay for us to move forward with this agreement with CGI Digital once again.
Did you mention how much the sponsorship was?
So I, I believe, if I remember correctly, approximately seven hundred dollars, depending on the size, the size of what the city is going to allow. If we wanted them to take over half the banners, that's going to be CGI's ultimately, their call. We just have to give them permission to seek the sponsors. But I think approximately it comes out roughly seven hundred dollars. And at the end of the year, the participating business will be able to keep their banner.
So fifty businesses give seven hundred. What, what happens?
It's, it's their fee. That's what they make. That's their profit. What we get out of it is the, the banners, decorative banners. It's almost like an economic development marketing tool, too, to help the city's brand as well. So there's many great ideas that we're thinking of, but we're just not there yet. This is just more to get your permission for us to start working with them.
If you notice, when you drive down Barton Road, sometimes you see the flag that was installed by the business owner.
But is that within our code? Because we have very specific code about...
The banner art. So right now, the city put our own banner up and down the Barton Road for Christmas decoration, up and down.
Businesses can't do that, because that's against...
Businesses cannot. That's correct. That's within the public right of way, so it's city right of way, and we would be...
Do we have to modify our code, or no?
No, that's city right of way. The only place where we have signage is in the zoning ordinance, which would apply to private properties. So it's, it's actually going to be a, ultimately, think of it as a city-initiated program. They were our, our banners. Well, take that back.
Yeah, the city poll, city's streetlight, and within our city public right of way. So all it is, it's just what, what to advertise, State of Brother, for example, they have a city nice...
And we benefit because the businesses benefit. There, we get their tax revenue.
Correct.
For them and for us. And like I said, we, we can, there's ideas that I've already written down, honoring local vets, possibly showing off that we're, come visit the local Blue Zone. There, there are lots of ideas that we're going to work through. We do. City staff approve the content, the location, and the size, and the sponsor, the participant as well.
How long are the banners up?
For exactly one year. And in one year, we have a whole new set of banners.
It'll be the same banners?
No.
We'll be looking at for a year?
That's a great, that's a great question. No, so we'd get a whole new set of, a different theme, different content. Unless we wanted to keep recycling the same stuff, they would print out the same design, but we are, we would be allowed to have a whole new design the next year.
So it's not a calendar year then for each, it's for each person? It's whenever they start, it's a year from then?
It's a calendar year.
It is?
When we start the program.
So why wouldn't you have, like he's saying, why wouldn't you have the same ones up for the whole year?
We can negotiate with them. We can, we, we can negotiate with them. Instead of one whole year, it'd be every six months or something.
So maybe I misinterpreted the question. I thought the question was, like, after the year ends, then up goes the new banners. And the new banners can be a whole different theme. It could be the year that we're honoring the local vets.
They pay twelve months at a time.
Twelve months at a time, yes.
So they don't enter the program at different times of the year? It's, it's one calendar year, that they all start at the beginning of the year?
That's, that's correct. They all start at the same time. The, the CGI will hire, contract a local vendor who will install all of the banners that same day.
And if they aren't all sold out, like halfway through the year, does somebody say, well, I would like it for the rest of the year? Is that how that goes?
Hey, if you pay, if we want to pay, they will come up.
They pay enough, you'll take the money.
Yes.
I'm sure they'll work with us, and we'll work with them.
Assuming we would not, it wouldn't be January, because potentially otherwise, we're waiting for an entire year, right? So you'd say maybe March or arbitrary.
For this year, yes. Then we have to first, if you approve it tonight, we have to review the agreement, and then come out with the design. And, and they will start working with the vendors, Chamber of Commerce, to see which, which business willing to pay six or seven hundred dollars a year for have...
Yeah, they started to go out and seek their sponsors. But you saw how quickly the turnaround was for their video series, so I'm assuming this will be a very quick turnaround as well, as long as we can find the time, staff.
In the documents you have now, is it spelled out what type of content is permissible and not, or is it one of those, I know it when I see it type things?
Oh, no, we... City had to approve it. We went through that before they, they print out the banner. The city had to prove what's on the banner.
No, I understand. But I mean, when you are deciding what to approve, are you going by written documents that this kind of thing is good and it's not, or is it just like, you know it when you see it, this isn't good, so I'm not going to approve it?
We will, we will give them ideas of what we want to see. Again, let's say if we go to the theme with honoring our local vet, or we have photos, we provide it to their design team. They designed, they'll whip something up, and then we'll approve that specific design. If we had our own design teams, then we would come up with it, too. There's even the possibility of working with the local artists, as indicated in the staff report. If we want to do something similar to what we did with the university, we can do that, too. We have full control over the content and the design of the banners.
Would this, would the city reserve any for our own purposes?
We can do that, too.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So that we get the twenty-five free. It can be for our own branding purposes. Like I said, if we choose, if we wanted to do a Blue Zone, if we wanted to highlight the fire station, or the firefighters or the sheriff, we're more than welcome to do that, too.
So I move to authorize and approve a three-year agreement with CSB?
I'll second the motion, but I still have questions.
Yes.
I'm still concerned about the maintenance of these things, because after they've been up for nine, ten, eleven months, they're going to start looking dirty, and we get Santa Ana winds through here that beat flags up.
Great point.
So we have to replace them. So I, I have that ma...
So let, let me...
It can all look good for a couple of months.
Let me assure you that we did have that discussion with the representative, and that's why it's a twelve-month maximum. And should there be any maintenance or repairs in between the twelve-month periods, they will take care of it. And they're, they are required to provide us with insurance, as shown in their own agreement. They will provide us with insurance if there's any issues. If there's repair, maintenance, they've already stated that in the agreement, and they will handle it, if it's throughout the year or at, at the end of the twelve-month period as well. So that, that was a discussion with them.
I still have concerns about them just getting dirty-looking. I mean, we've got a lot of wind that comes through here. Sometimes it churns up a lot of dust. I'm worried about the same, looking at the same banner for a year and watching it deteriorate. So that's my concern. That's one. The second, who's going to decide how much is devoted to whatever the city's theme is, and how much of the space on the banners devote? I saw different levels. Do we control that?
The city controls that. The typical is about a third or a fourth of the design, the banners. And what we provided in the photos, the screenshots from her presentation, were approximately about a third of the banner. That's the norm.
And how many of these are we planning? I, I realize that there's an economic issue in here. We've got to have people that want to sponsor them, hopefully. But I, I, you know, sometimes a little is better than a lot. I don't want banners on every streetlight, you know, up and down Redlands Boulevard and Barton and so forth.
You bring up a good point. You're welcome if you want to cap it. We can consider that tonight, too. I, I don't imagine we'd get too many, as we didn't, we had success with our own videos, but I don't believe they had any success getting any other businesses to participate in the video program. Again, we're going to get our bare minimum, which is the twenty-five free. If you'd like, like I said, if you want to put a cap on it, we could bring it back to you if we get to a certain number, or...
I don't have a magical number in mind. I'm, I'm just saying, if you get too many up, it'll start looking cluttered, is my concern.
I have the same concern, and, and, and I want to make sure that, no, we don't, we don't want to have too many banners. It's just, yeah.
Fortunately, like we've mentioned, we do have control, and we can, staff can put a stop to it when we feel like it's exceeding your expectations, or not, well, exceeding the amount that you don't want to pass.
Yeah. Again, I don't have anything specific in mind. I just don't want to overdo this because it's a money generator.
I think this is an opportunity, like we have art in public places, where you don't want too much, because too much color, you know, people get detracted. But just the right amount, I think, would make the city look way prettier.
Until they get dirty. No, I'm, I'm being cynical, but it is a concern of mine.
I would bet the VA will, will pay to put up Dr. Rigsby's picture on some of them to say, come visit the VA and the VA facilities.
Yes, I doubt it, but they'll probably put up the same pictures that they have in the lobby, which is a bunch of people we don't like.
Lobby of the VA, you're saying? All right.
That one went over.
Take a vote.
Okay, the motion is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with Community Showcase Banners LLC, DBA for CGI Digital for participation, participation in their no-cost decorative street banner program. I will take your vote. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any reports of council members?
Got a few.
Yes, sir.
All right, first one, SB COG, so Council of Governments, they have been studying an increase in fees for each city that is a member. Loma Linda's projected increase is going to go from fourteen thousand in current state to around twenty-five thousand. Now, the reason for this is because since 2018, they've been expanding the amount of activities we've been doing. A big one, we've talked for like three months now, is a nurse triage system that was rolled out in the high desert. Basically, instead of sending trained, I'll take that back, not trained, instead of sending a full apparatus of people to address any 911 call, they're sending nurses using Uber for cases that aren't emergencies. It's lowering costs, but a great pilot that has had a lot of success, and they're going to expand it. That, and then grant research and writing. One big thing is, we're not getting a lot of these grants that we're eligible for just because there's not enough staff. So all these increases are going towards that. Loma Linda got off pretty easy. Our fees didn't even double. Someone like Fontana, their fees has quadrupled, increasing by hundreds of thousands. So that's going to be coming to the city council, I think, for approval pretty soon. Second, crime. So this Saturday and over the past week, been talking to a lot of residents and businesses. A lot of them had concerns about crime. Now, I'm going to make two points about that. One, I think the city is doing a lot to address the situation. We just installed those cameras, but I don't think a lot of businesses know about it. So if there's something we can do to advertise exactly what the city's doing, whether it's on our website, social media, or having a coffee hour with businesses, I think that'd be great, just to let them know, so they don't feel like we're not hearing some of their concerns. Second, unfortunately for my brother, his car got broken into. Someone smashed the window. It wasn't in Loma Linda, it was in Redlands. The point I'm trying to make here is that Redlands, I Googled the non-emergency number. It was really easy to find, and then they also allow reporting online. Going back to that thing I made about SPC COG, where, you know, they're sending nurses in Ubers, lowering costs. I think this reporting online might help the sheriff's department decrease some of their costs. You don't need someone attending to all the reports that they receive. I tried looking that on our website. I didn't see anything where you could report a crime such as that online. Do we have something like that?
Hello. We currently don't have that, but we do have a reporting system where someone will call you. I, I'm, I'm sorry on the acronym. I don't know if the mayor knows it. I think it's ESRR, where there's a group of people that are trained in taking reports remotely, like something, like you said, like a vehicle burglary. And if there's not leads to work on right then, like the person just needs a report number, the person on the phone will give it to them. So it's not a, we don't have a system yet where the, where you, as a reporting party, can fill it out and complete it. We have something where you actually talk to somebody, customer. Do you remember the acronym?
I don't remember the acronym, but I was part of research in looking at some of those online reporting systems. And the, the problem is, is they, they seem like something good on the front end, but they actually cause man-hours on the back end. So anytime anybody submits a report online, it still has to be reviewed by a human being to go through, to make sure it meets the elements of the crime, and make sure it's not something that's, that shouldn't be reported online. For example, let's say somebody, somebody goes online and they report that they were molested. Well, that's clearly not something that, and it happens. And so then, somebody then has to go back out and reduplicate and redo that investigation. Plus, it requires more supervisors to review those reports and assign them to detectives, people for follow-up. And so the, the department looked at it several years ago. They saw that it was not cost beneficial. It's more, it depends. Of course, it depends on the agency and how they have it implemented, but it was almost more gimmicky than anything. The, the next, the next point or part to that is, a lot of those online types of things you're reporting is just to get an insurance number. So not, that's not going to be investigated. Traditionally, stuff that really is going to be investigated requires somebody to come out. And the sheriff's department does employ civilian report takers that come out, and we have them here in Loma Linda, that alleviate deputy time, so they come out and take the reports. Plus, there's the telephone reporting unit, like Lieutenant Smith was talking about. So it, it is there. There's probably some other things they could look at. At the end of the day, we don't have a whole lot of control on telling the sheriff exactly how to do that. The new sheriff is a little more, he's more technology-minded. The last sheriff, who was a phenomenal man, he, he had the opinion that people want a deputy sheriff to show up, they should get a deputy sheriff, and that's more of a comfort, that's more of an assurance that, hey, I'm, I'm not just blowing you off with an online reporting system. Not, not that that's bad, but you know what I mean? His, his feeling was, I want a live person to show up there, because that's a customer service model. But the new sheriff is probably open to more of that technology stuff, and I'm sure we're going to see it.
You know, apart from the public safety, I actually think this is a good idea. I brought it up, over the years, I've brought it up. I mean, I get phone calls from people saying, hey, I was driving down Barton Road, and there's this big geyser of water, and then I turn around and call him. I think there should be something online or something where people can report things like that, because I think that's a common thing people think. Okay, I just Google the website, report a problem, but then we don't seem to have that. Or the very least, if there was prominently displayed some sort of phone number that people can call when they see something bad that needs fixing.
All of our law enforcement signs that are around the city, whether they're in parking lots or whatever, they all have the non-emergency phone number posted on them. It's eight-two-four-oh-six-eight-zero, I think. And it's been that same number for thirty years. But that is posted... But that is posted, whenever you see any type of sheriff's information, signage, anything like that, that number's there. And you can Google that, it's on the website, it's on the social media, it talks about that, seeing a non-emergency line to call. But sheriff's department still staffs it with human beings. So yes, there's... Yeah. Whether or not that's cost-effective in today's world, I mean, I helped study that stuff probably, what, eight, nine years ago? And we just, we just found that there was too much involved. And then to comment on, on the thing about the nurses, Confire, which we are a founding member and on the board, and Confire has been doing that type of triage stuff, they kind of pioneered that over the last couple of years where they have nurses that actually handle 911 medical calls and are trying to triage those things instead of sending full apparatus. And then the other super, super big news is the county just decided to ask AMR, or to thank AMR for their service and no longer bring them back into the county. And starting, what, September, October? October. Beginning in October, Confire will take over the administration of ground ambulance service. That is also very phenomenal because Confire will now be able to determine whether or not they send an ambulance or fire to, to a call, or one or both. Instead of right now in today's model, we constantly send fire and AMR and double those services. Plus, AMR gets there, and this is kind of the rub. AMR gets there, our firefighters, our paramedics, our first responders get there, they stabilize the victims, they give them narcotics, they do all those expensive things on the city dime. AMR grabs them, puts them on the rig, drives them to the hospital. Our folks go with them for continuum of care. Correct terminology? Okay? Because that's how much we care. We're not the only city. Every city does that. So we take that patient from the start to finish, and AMR gets to bill the insurance and gets all the money for it, and we lose. So when we talk about how public safety, we don't recoup what we put out, those are some of the things that, that happen. We spend a lot of money, especially in this town, keeping people healthy and alive because of all the medical calls and stuff that we run on, and we have never been allowed to charge insurance, not the person, but insurance companies or any of that type of stuff because AMR has done that. So in the new model moving forward, Confire will be able to do that. And then I'm not sure, I don't remember how that works, if it's a cost benefit for us that comes back. It's not a direct fund mechanism, right?
No, the, the current design is, Confire's model is to look beyond profit for anybody and look more into enhancement to the system. And so it's a five-year contract starting October 1st this year. And so pretty much the expectation is over the next five years, any money that doesn't necessarily go, have to directly go to the cost will be used in pay back some of the debt that's been generated in getting us here first, and then two, is finding any enhancement to the system to make it better than what it currently is. And then someday, when everything's great, you could see possibly member agencies getting money to help our EMS system within our city in some way. It would probably go to say, hey, if we had some of the money, we could do some more direct costs. But I would say that's probably down the line. A little bit more of the big message right now is we want to enhance the system as much as possible.
And then one final comment. I, my, my parents' house, my parents passed away several years ago, and, and their house is in the city of San Bernardino. And recently, it was broken into. San Bernardino Police Department will not even respond to calls like that because they are so busy handling shootings and stabbings and murders and nonsense like that. There are several types of calls that they will not even respond to. So I had to go online, and it, it felt pretty crappy to me to report that the house was broken into, people stole a bunch of stuff, and, and that police, and I'm not knocking them because they're incredibly overworked, understaffed, and that city's out of control. And Dan worked over there for a few years, he knows what that city's like. So I did not feel good at all about having to report that online and would have loved to seen an officer come out. I know that they won't investigate that. I know, you know what I mean? I, I know. So I beli, I believe we have a good balance. We have, we have folks out here that care, that are engaged, they work hard, and when the deputies show up to take a report here, they try to follow it through, all the way through to, to get somebody in custody and make them pay. So, sorry, my two cents, I just wanted to add that. Sorry about your brother.
Can I ask you a question, Bob? If I understand what you were reporting, SCAG is increasing our city dues to them to support them by roughly $11,000, right?
Not SCAG, Council of Governments for San Bernardino County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. But the reason they're jacking up the fees so significantly at one time is there's going to be added services?
They've been underfunded for a while. What they are, what their aim is, is to add services. The biggest one I've heard is this grant, research and writing, where there's a lot of grants. So from my understanding, a lot of this money is going to North California, and we haven't done a good job of capturing a lot of these state and federal funds. So a lot of that is to hire people to be able to do that so we can bring more money into our region.
So as somebody that's not been involved in this, what benefits do we get from being part of it?
So we get more resources. You're not going to see everything built in Loma Linda, right? But throughout the region, there's going to be more infrastructure that we can build out if we're able to capture these additional funds.
I, I can tell you, a fact is that the East Coast actually gets most of the federal funding in terms of grants and things like that because they're way on top of that versus us out here in the West Coast.
So like, one thing I'll, I'll tell you that I'm really interested in is, I, I know at the airport, they're working on something with hydrogen, right? If we're able to get some more funding for that, they can expand that further out, whether it's for our trains, whether it's for personal transit. But that's the kind of things that I'm thinking of, that they're going to be applying for to expand those kind of offerings to the general public for the whole county.
I mean, that, that's a profound increase in the dues that we're paying and, you know. I wish somebody was here from them that would really lay this out for us so that I understood better. I assume at some point this will come to council for approval. And I'm going to need to know more about it to support it, honestly.
You, you know, it's kind of akin to like League of Cities. There's a lot of, there's a lot of cities that are asking, what benefit does the League of Cities have anymore? And there's cities in our county that are talking about pulling out because clearly we haven't, the League of Cities has not been able to hold off Sacramento in terms of some of the craziness that's happened and, you know, taking away funding and money and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, I, I don't know. I, I don't know.
I mean, from, what was it, 14 to 25,000 or something like that? That's, most businesses can't just increase whatever their fees or charges or whatever. I mean, that, that's an incredible increase.
But it's, it's not imposed by just mindless bureaucracy. This is, this is the council of government's side of Sandbag. So Sandbag started out as a council of governments, and it morphed into a transportation money spender. And it left the council of governments kind of in the dust. They even gave up the name. I mean, the name Sandbag is still there because the whole JPA is Sandbag. And the other stuff, it's like Sandbag DBA SBCTA. So all the discussions over the years have been, do we want to be a council of governments or not? And if we want to be it, we have to pony up some cash to actually hire people to do some stuff. We can't just milk it off of the side of SBCTA because they have to be responsible for every dime they spend that's federal and state. So to me, I think it's worth this nominal amount. And like, like Bobin said, we didn't get hit with the big fees. It was, you know, it was, you know, Fontana and places like that that really got the big ones. And we have a full seat at the table at Sandbag and can help steer that money just as much as, as, as Fontana with just, we're basically throwing a nickel at it and they're throwing a dollar at it. So, you know, we, we are overrepresented on Sandbag because we get one civic seat, just like all the other cities that are much larger than we are. So I think this is a way for us to leverage a lot of regional activities with a fairly small personal contribution from our city. So I think it's very much worth it because, you know, if you're going to do a COG, you've got to actually try it. If they totally fall on their face in the future, we can just say, you know, close the thing down. But all of this stuff is decided by, by our representative and the other representatives of all the other cities. It's not just a bureaucracy, it's not the same as SCAG. This is where we've got 29 seated representatives that decide what they want to do.
I'm just saying, if they're wanting to increase fees by, in our case, roughly 80%, I mean, you just don't do that unless you've got a good pitch for what...
Correct. And, and that, but they've made the pitch to our representatives in, in council at Sandbag. You know, it's not, it's not a thing that was decided by, you know, bureaucrats. This was decided by, by representatives and our representative ostensibly voted on the topic. So we're, this was something we imposed on ourselves. So it makes it, I think it makes it a little bit easier to swallow.
And Dr. Daley, like if you want a complete list of activities that they're involved in, we can definitely get that.
Okay. That would be helpful.
Closing out my part, Senior Center. So I was looking on social media, great job. I see two things. It's either about the trash or it's something about the Senior Center. So we're advertising it, it seems like. I, I think one thing I heard from attendance over here is if we can have something for signing up, either for activities or for volunteers, I think it's just a good way to get the name out. One thing I think is going really well for the city is this new, the farmer's market, Sunday Market that we have going. Really great businesses, businesses that want to operate in Loma Linda, and I've talked to a lot of them. They have, a, a lot of them are very impressive, and I think there's some work we can do with them to potentially bring them permanently over here. But I see the Senior Center as something similar where it can bring traffic in if we can make it easier for individuals to sign up, not only to attend, but also for volunteers, not only for seniors, but, but also veterans. There's a Veterans Village on Van Louven. I know a lot of those are looking to get more involved in the community. I think this might be an opportunity to open it up to them as well. Last thing. So there was a resident in the city, they had an issue with a tree, it was a city tree. Our city manager did a really good job of getting on top of that and identifying that the tree did not pose a hazard to any of the sewer system underneath. I've received two other emails from different residents about, you know, whether, why we're not taking care of different shrubs and et cetera around the city. Do we have a map of exactly what is city land and what isn't city property for sidewalks?
You can go to Accesso, parcel map. We have the city map that shows the public right of way, and, and the homeowner can look at it. And, and so residential street, for example, is, the, the right of way is 60 feet wide. So from the center line of the street, you go 30 feet, that's where your, the, the city property line is, and anything past that is, is property owner. But a lot of time, it's the parkway in front of the resident had to be maintained by the homeowner, even though it's in the public right of way, is maintained by the homeowners.
Great. And last follow-up on that, so is a homeowner able to give up their land, say the whole street, like five homeowners, in exchange for the city trimming the grass and maintaining it? Nope? Cool. Thank you.
I have to, I have to, I have to say it. So like, I, I, you know, I live in a community that is an HOA that because of a dirty deal that was done years ago with, with a council that was in place long before any of us, those are city streets, city right of way, and my HOA, meaning me, I pay for all the work that's done on those streets and on those trees and in those parks and all that stuff. And so it's kind of a rub for us as a community. You're laughing, and actually, Jarb told the city council at the time that that was not a good idea and wasn't ethical, and they still did it anyway. So, yeah, that's, that's an example of bad governance. And, and my, my neighbors are, and we're all paying for it. All right. Reports of officers.
Okay. Andrew. Okay, at the last city council meeting, the city council, Leonard asked for a question about the water tank. So I'd like to take this opportunity to give you an update on, on how is this our 1.6 million, 6 million gallon water tanks are coming along? Huh? Okay, so this is when they went over with the, with the council, Leonard. So this is Beaumont Avenue, and this is Mountain View. The question that came up was, okay, this is the water tank up in the hill. We have a access road from Beaumont all the way up the hill to where the water tank is. And then we have a detention basin to the south, okay? So what we plan to do is we, we are putting in 18-inch storm drain pipe from where the tank is to drain the water to into the detention basin. So any rain that fall within this area and on top, or if the water spill out of the water tank, instead of going to Beaumont, it will come out to the basin. In addition to, to the 18-inch storm drain, we also put in a 16-inch water main that come down here to Beaumont and come down all the way to Mountain View to tie it to the existing 24-inch water main at, at Mountain View, which is also connect to the existing reservoir here and existing reservoir up in the, in the hill here. For the cross-section, this is cross-section AA, this is Beaumont Avenue is over here. The tank is going to sit right behind the hill. So it's going to be a little, a little small portion that the people that live way over here will see the top of the tank, but the majority of the tank is hide behind the hill. Okay? So a little show of how we cut the, the existing slope, we recompact it and recompact the path and build the, the reservoir. So this is when they, when they create the access road and install the irrigation pipe and some conduit for the fiber optic conduit and electrical, they come from Beaumont all the way up to the tank. This is when they start cutting the hill, and so they move the dirt from the side of the hill and build the path down here. And the whole time is the, the path is compacted to make sure that during an earthquake or rain, the path is not moved on us. This is, see they start to, the paths start to develop right here, they're to cut the slope. And this is the, the 18-inch storm drain that can, come from up here all the way down to the detention basin down here. And if you have a chance to walk up the hill, this is the, the path for the track, the trail that go up into the south hill. This is after they, they finished grading the path, they pour the, the foundation for the water tank, this concrete pad, then they insulate the, the, the concrete slab where the tank going to go, so there's all steel. And the steel is, is came from up north, Northern California, past Robo, delivered to the job site, and one panel at a time start building it. So this picture is taken this past Friday, I went hike up the hill, and so we, I stood on top and, and, and took the picture down. So this is the height of the tank. The, the only thing left is we're going to put the roof on top, and this is the top of the, the slope.
They get the crane out.
So they're going to take it apart, and there's a door over here that, it, it remove it and they weld the, the, the tank back. Okay? How much does this cost? Okay? The, the design and the study for the tank, at the beginning, I thought... The, the design and the study for the tank, at the beginning, I thought, well, it's be about 1 million gallon tank. Well, with the home that we built, with the, the master plan that we planned to do, the tank ended up being a 1.6 million gallon reservoir. So the design and the study is about $168,000. Environmental is about $50,000. Construction management and inspection is $515,000. Geotechnical services, this is before, during and after, is about $114,000. The construction cost is, is 5.7 million. The total cost is about 6.5. The project is on schedule, is, is coming along very good. I hardly get any complaint from the neighbors, that's a good thing. So it's scheduled to be completed in April of 2024. So it's coming along good.
Dr. Daley knows if he wants to know if you need help with the hose.
So, in, in addition to that, you drive down Beaumont, we, it closed right now, because we are in the process of extend the exist, extend the 12-inch water main to go underneath the railroad track, and we hang it on the bridge crossing San Mateo Channel and hook it up to the existing water main down on Nevada Street. So this is going to be, provide the, the water to the new housing on the board side of Nevada, you know, on, on the north side of Korean Church and the south side Korean Church, and go all the way to the new track on California Street. Thank you.
Nothing else from officers? We will adjourn the city council meeting. We've already opened up the housing authority. So I'll give the clerk a second to get to that agenda.
Thank you. It's coming.
Technology is slower than paper.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any non-agendized items for the housing authority, please come forward. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the scheduled items. We've already dispensed with the joint council and housing authority meeting on the comprehensive financial report, so we have a consent calendar.
Move it.
First by Dr. Rigsby.
Second.
Second, in unison, but I think...
Give it to Daley. He'll show he's awake.
You've got a third now, so... You got picked, so you're up on the screen.
Prove you're awake.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the housing authority agenda as submitted. I will take your vote, please. Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Any reports of officers, reports of council members? Seeing none, we'll close the housing authority agenda and move on to the successor agency. We seem to be getting the kinks out of the system, though. It's working a lot better.
Yes.
Did we ever get those replaced over there for you guys?
We're working on it. We did the purchase order, and we're working with the company.
Okay. All right. Any items to be added or deleted here?
No, sir.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any non-agendized successor agency items, please step forward. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the scheduled items, which is our consent calendar.
Move it.
That was definitely in unison.
Give it to the better looking one.
Pick your favorite.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency as submitted. I will take your vote.
Age before beauty, I guess.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Any reports of council members or officers? And seeing none, we will conclude this agenda and we'll be adjourned. Thank you very much. And thank you, Sonia and your group, for a great report, again.
Thank you.